Good morning to all of you and welcome to this special meeting. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comments?
No, sir.
Anybody aware of any public comments? If not, let's look at number three on our agenda in regard to Resolution 21-06. Seagull Drive, Mr. Hewitt, can you speak to that?
Yes, sir. This is the initial formal step towards paving Seagull Drive. This was considered by the Board at the last regular Board meeting, and now is the action required in order to move forward with the paving of Seagull Drive.
Assuming everyone's aware of that, is there a motion?
I make a question to approve the resolution?
In your second.
Dave.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number four, budget workshop. Mr. Hewitt, I guess that goes back to you.
Yes, sir. There are two portions of the budget workshop today. I don't know how the commissioners want to proceed. The first portion of it is how the commissioners would like to establish or prioritize the objectives that you've provided to one another and are represented in the in the in the package. I would suggest that you execute some type of scoring system so that we can rack them up and incorporate those as stated or as necessary in the budget itself. Because what we've done with our budget is, in effect, without the benefit of commissioners scoping exactly what they want. So I would ask the commissioners or the Board to consider how they want to go through that. There's a number of ways you can do it. In the past, we've used a 3-2-1 scoring mechanism on the objectives themselves, rack them up. And it may be just as easy for the commissioners to handwrite, you know, a 3-2-1 with three being "gotta have", two being "nice to have", and one being...
Two is "should have".
Should have, yeah.
Must have, should have, nice to have.
Yeah, must have, should have, nice to have. And then we can rack those up and bring them back to the next workshop on the, what, two weeks from today. I offer that only as it's the template for what we've done in the past. And that, in the past, that exercise has actually been done in this workshop or in this timeframe. But it would probably be just as easy for y'all to take them back and do it and get them back to Heather on Monday. But I only suggest that because that's what we've done before.
Yeah, I mean, just a reminder, after we had our tally, at some point we decided what number we drew the line at. Because there was usually a good break that you'd see a lot of stuff that would have a high point total, and then there'd be a lot of sort of minor numbers. So that would probably be how we would do the discussion at the next meeting. It would be where we draw the line, to say these are the ones that we take. It's worked for the last three years pretty well.
Any discussion? It's a lively crowd this morning, I'm telling you. I'd say everybody's in agreement with that, then?
Yeah, and if I could just restate what that is, is y'all would take these assembled two pages of individual commissioners submitted goals and handcribe a score on them, three to one for all of them, and then we'll assemble them. If you get those back to us by Monday, it'll be great.
You can give something a zero to if you just think that it is irrelevant. A zero is okay.
Second floor, okay. This is the first budget workshop. You should have a hard copy of these slides. And just as a matter of preamble, I will go through these slides fairly quickly. Here's our budget schedule. We are at the seven May kickoff session, the rough draft workshop. So I want to preface that with, there are some required actions that we have to do. The next workshop is two weeks hence. And I have to deliver a budget message to the Board by the 31st of May. Our schedule here is to have a public hearing on the 4th of June, consider the ordinance at the regular meeting the 15th of June. And if there's some final tweaks or whatever, you've got two weeks between then and when we have to adopt the budget by the 30th of June. So before going into the specifics of the budget, there are some administrative actions that I need to make you aware of. I believe it is page 11 that, in your package, the budget worksheets in the top right-hand corner. You should have a number on those. So page 11, that's titled "Water and Sewer Funded Revenues". Y'all need to tear that one out. Page 11, tear that one out. That one's got a $3 billion error in it, so we just...
$3 billion?
We, yeah, we... Like I said, the title of this workshop is Rough Draft Workshop, and that's probably a pretty good example of why it's called Rough Draft Workshop. And then also, we have been able to assemble the capital improvement plan that was not included in your package and have those also for distribution. Did you give them the capital improvement plan to...?
I got that.
Yeah, thanks. And what Daniel's giving you there is the capital improvement plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the budget worksheets themselves. I want to describe or go through for the layout for the benefit of the Board. This is a fairly standard layout of the budget worksheets themselves that has traditionally been used. So a little bit about how those documents are laid out, the format for them, and what they do, what they don't do, and what they represent. So the documents themselves, we have four operational funds. The General Fund, the Water Sewer Fund, the B Part or the Occupancy Tax Fund, and the Canal Dredging Fund. What is not shown or included in your budget are the Capital Reserve Funds. We can discuss those, though, but we're still working through some of the tweaks on them. And then also that we've just distributed the capital improvement plan. And I'm a foot stomp on that capital improvement plan because it is now two years old. We did not update it last year because of COVID. The law says that you don't even have to have a capital improvement plan in the budget. So we were just in survival mode last year and adopted a budget. So the capital improvement plan, which lays out through '28, '29, in the same format. So the pages, the way the pages themselves are organized is that you have five columns in those on each page. The first column is a line item description. The second column is the actual amount as of the end of June of '20. So that's actually where we were at the end of last budget year. And the second column, third column, I mean, is the current year's budget as it's amended to date. So that's your budget today, your current budget as of today. And then the fourth column, those are the actual amounts as of today or the most current amounts that we have. And then the fifth column, the last column, that's what we're working on. That's your proposed budget that we've drafted up for you. So are there any questions on the layout of the way the documents got? Last year, you got this year, where we are this year, and you got the proposed documents. And the capital improvement plan, that's a little bit different because the first piece of that, whereas in your budget worksheets, you've got it by fund, you've got revenues and then expenses. In the capital improvement plan, there's multiple years across the page. Then you've got all of your revenues first and then the expenses, but they zero out anyway. And we can talk a little bit more about that because if you haven't seen one of those before, sometimes it can get a little bit confusing. But the thing to remember about the capital improvement plan is the first year in the capital improvement plan, those values are in the current year's proposed budget. That's the link between that capital improvement plan. Yes, it forecast out to '27, '28, but the first year in it is what's in this current year budget worksheets. Any questions on that format? So getting into the specifics of the workshop or the highlights, if you will, what we've done is we've drafted the budget up at the revenues using a 20-cent tax rate. That's the same tax rate that we had last year. It reflects, on the revenue side, it reflects the increased building that we're seeing, construction of homes here on the island, the positive trend in the occupancy tax, and it passes through the county's $2.36 wholesale water rate increase.
Dave, what page are you looking at?
Page three.
Page three.
Page three.
In these blue slides?
One more. Page three.
Sorry, I'm a guy who doesn't agree.
No, sir, I'll keep that in mind.
And, I'm sorry, your paper slides track to what I'm flipping through on the screens, too.
Gotcha.
If I get ahead of myself, just tell me, simmer down. Okay, no problem. And what the budget worksheets represent, the department heads, in addition to the Canal Working Dredging Group, have submitted their request. I've compiled them, but we've done it without the benefit of those goals being prioritized by the commissioners. We don't think we're too far off, but we're going to need y'all's help on scoring those goals. So if there's anything that we need to finesse, we can work that in. So I don't think we're too bad off, but y'all need to flavor the sauce here a little bit with prioritizing those goals. Continuing with the highlights of it, some of the things that are included here, we've provided for a 3% merit pool across the board. That's a merit performance pool. It provides funding for the Seagull Street paving, sanitation dump truck, and inspections, a new inspections position plus a vehicle in accordance with our vehicle replacement policy, looking at replacing two police vehicles in addition to replacing a water and sewer vehicle. It also provides for implementation of the Board's fire hydrant replacement policy or resolution that y'all adopted earlier in the year to do 10 a year. Includes funding for a water rate study, the lift station two outfit, lift station four gin set replacement because that's using an old generator on a new lift station, several walkway repairs, the Ocean Boulevard bike path. It also provides the funding for the core stand study and also funding for the regular Lockwood Folly inlet maintenance and the bi or every-two-year inlet crossing sand project. What it does not include, what it does not include, remember when we tapped the brakes on the Jordan Boulevard restroom? It does not include funding for the Jordan Boulevard restroom upgrade because we don't know how big a cry for those types of services is going to come out of the Parks and Rec master plan update. I do want to specifically call out that it does not include a police detective's position or a vehicle that Chief Dixon asked for. There's no sand search in it, and there is no ISA/IHIS money in these draft documents. Remember, at the last Board meeting, we have received that approval from FEMA on it, and you will amend your budget to accept that money at the next Board meeting. So that's not reflected in here.
How much is that, David?
About $4 million, isn't it?
Three, three million, 3.8.
3.8. There's no American Recovery Plan money in this budget either. We do not know at this time what the implementation rules are. We have been apprised that we're going to receive $296,000 draws, if you will. The first is scheduled to be June 15th of this year and then a year later. But we don't know what the rules are. We have an appraisal workshop on just what those implementation rules are going to be scheduled here in the next week or so, I believe. So there's more forthcoming information on that. There are no contributions to the Beach and Inlet Capital Reserve Fund. However, I need to stipulate to the Board, our current fund balance policy directs that a contribution from the General Fund to the Beach and Inlet Capital Reserve Fund be made when the balance is greater than 70%. At the end of our fiscal year last year, the audited amount for our fund balance was 112%. So that amounts to a by-policy directed transfer equal to $1,68,523 that is supposed to have been made administratively. I did not make that I did not make that apportionment last year. So that, and what I would propose to do based on the Commissioner's guidance, if you still want to adhere to that policy, is that that would be included in your next budget draft documents for consideration, whether you want to consider the whole million-dollar transfer or if you would like to amend the fund balance policy and do something else. Part of that is deciding on how much money you want to keep in your fund balance. And oh, by the way, we have not run fund balance calculations on what this budget is, so we would need to make that decision soon. Any questions about that? Yes, sir.
Steve, the amount of money we're talking about here with the transfer, does that fall on page five of the documents you gave us where in the 2021 year?
Yes, sir. That would have been the that would have been the end-of-the-year transfer. It's the million dollars.
Okay, but so that's separate and distinct from two years ago? We put in roughly $500,000?
Yes, sir.
And then last year, we did nothing?
Right.
David, there's one thing in the slides I don't see. Are we not budgeting for the water tower study?
Not this year, it's in the capital plan. We slid that to the right. Okay, so what you have here is, these are rough documents, but they are zeroed in. And what I mean by they're zeroed in, by fund, the revenues equal the expense. I do want to point out that in the governing body expenses, you do have a value of $173,000 that's marked out as available to appropriate. Okay, so however you want to do that, and it may be that once we get the scrubbing on these, since they're so rough, that it could be we're $173,000 in the hole. So don't fall in love with that number just yet, but that's where we are right now. We've got the entire staff here. We've got the budget documents in front of you and whatever type of interrogatories or dialogue that y'all'd like to engage in, we're eager to talk to you about it. So that's my introduction of the budget, y'all.
So you're encouraging the commissioners to have an open dialogue with... Do we want to go back to a beginning point to go through? Or are we going to do from the here?
In that vein, I would suggest that instead of popping all over, the document is laid out from General Fund, Water Fund, B Part Fund, Canal Dredging Fund, that you go through it sequentially to dialogue, and that way you're not just all over the place.
Can I ask, you just lead us in the order you...
Oh, if that's what y'all want to do, okay. On page four, the General Fund revenues. All the General Fund revenues, however, 30 or 40 of those are listed there. Our current tax base on, and I'll just hit some of the high points there. The Advalorm taxes, current, that reflects the current tax base. That revenue in particular is prescribed by law and is based on your tax base and your collection rate that you actually experienced last year. Got a little bit of an increase, not that much. Even though we're building 30 homes a year approximately, those aren't all completed yet, so it's not a revale year, I think is what I'm trying to get there on that. Some of our, I would like to point out a couple of things. Because of COVID and some of the rules about not being able to shut off utilities, we're not sure how that's going to affect the closeout of the current year. So for example, on our utilities franchise tax, which is right at $230,000 worth of budget, that money is distributed from the state on a quarterly basis, but we're just going to hold that projection steady because we don't know how we're going to end up on that. The sales and use tax, we're going to budget that conservatively, although at the retail level, there's a lot of sales being made online. So that's kind of a phenomenon that we're not sure how that's going to play out either. Building permits, you know, that's some of our projections that building is going to hold steady for the upcoming year. I don't know how much the doubling and the tripling of the price of lumber is going to affect construction, but right now I don't think that we're seeing anything or any forecast that that will slow down.
I have a question about the inspections Department. The new vehicle and additional help, in just simple layman's terms, has a cost that we're considering stacked up against the income being produced by that department? My recollection is that department has been a positive cash flow for us for a long time thanks to the good staff that we have. But can you give us an overview of that right quick?
And the rationale for that, of course, is workload, but that the State Treasurer now and the Department of Insurance is actually looking at the revenues produced by the inspections Department against what their expenses are. Evidently, at some point in time, there have been inspections rates and revenues that have been collected that are in excess of what the service being provided is, i.e., they make more money than they spend. So this, with the hiring of an additional person and the vehicle, should make those revenues and expenses for that department be about the same. So they're eating what they earn is pretty much the, I think is the analogy there.
I actually made notes that, given how everything is looking right now as of March, given the strong '19, '20, and the anticipated continuing in '21, '22, I actually wondered if the building permits and these inspections are actually a bit low still. I know that Tim does his best to estimate, saying nothing is ever certain, but...
Well, let me talk about how the revenue projections are, the budgets predicated on the finance officers' estimates. And we've dialogued about those estimates. And as a matter of fact, those estimates have been increased from the ones that the building inspector provided me with.
Okay, then my only other question about things that look a bit low to me is parking violations. Now, I know we don't view going after parking violations as a revenue stream, but... But when you look at 1920, the actual, you look at the 2021 budget and before we get into the May-June timeframe, we're already above budget. And we've set 2122 as same as 2021. And yet, part of our reason of expanding the force was so that we actually went after some of the problems that we have. So I would have assumed we would have a slight increase in parking violation revenue, given where we are right now for this budget year and knowing that it's part of our enforcement sort of objective is to use our force to get things back to some sort of a normal state, a better state.
Yeah, we 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 looked at that and decided that the best way to forecast that was through historical trend analysis instead of predating that estimate on a just a one-year snapshot and an approach to what we thought might happen. So that's a mathematical projection there, and it is going to be lower than what we had. Any questions on on revenues, on the general fund revenues? Over the governing body expenses, I'll just pick on professional services. Just so y'all know, $60,000, that's where we pay for the lawyer and the auditor from. And that's we're estimating those expenses are going to be lower this year. Debt service on the Newtown Hall continues, that glide slope continues downward. And the operations and repair bill on Newtown Hall, now that we've got the generator set, is is projected at $72,500. I don't know what kind of expenses that we're going to incur on these air conditioners falling off. We've been repairing them at a pace of one to two a year. Now that the building's 13 years old, there's 15 of those air conditioners on the backside of the building. It may be one, it may be two, it may be three. So we kind of split the difference there on that. And we'll be that is one particular line item that we're going to come back to and and may have to modify before the documents go final. And I spoke to the that the transfer amounts are not included in the governing body's expense line. So that that's where those those funds would be injected into the budget, should you desire to do so.
Do we want to discuss that now or do we want to wait until later?
But then we should discuss it now. I guess we had transferred approximately $500,000 in the B part fund and the beach renervation fund in the 2021. And we did not transfer any money into that in this budget again. Why why will we not transfer $500,000 into beach renervation? What are we doing instead?
I I don't have a reason for that. I just wanted to advise y'all of what by policy is directed to do and tee it up for your discretion.
Last year, we used the.
You you did pull you pulled a million and a half out of it last year to pay for your debt service. And then things kind of caught back up.
So and and we typically have been putting in the amount that we get back from the county as we reduce the debt. So the way I viewed it is we would go back to doing that automatically, whatever that amount is this year.
It's about $30,000.
And then the transfer according to our ordinance, it it sort of helps make up for the fact that last year we took the money out of the sand fund because we didn't know what was going to happen in our occupancy tax. So, you know, to me, transferring that that million dollars sort of gets us back where we we would have been if we would have done the normal way of paying for our debt service on central reach. So I don't view it as a as a bad practice to do that this year. I do think we should revisit our ordinance on how we handle our target for our general fund because we did talk about this before the last election. Right now, our target for our fund balance is staying in the 40 to 70 range. And we discussed whether we needed to increase that from 40, 70 to maybe 70 to 100. And then, of course, things sort of changed in terms of the board as well as last year. There were just because of COVID things that we just sort of left that weren't critical. But I think that's another topic that we should discuss. Maybe not right now, but do we want to change our target fund balance range? But I think doing the transfer.
If 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 I could suggest, I heard $500,000, perhaps it would be useful for the next one is for us to put that in as a working number. And then that'll allow us to do the mathemations on just what it does for the fund balance ratio and also what it what type of balance it would strike in the beach and inlet capital reserve fund.
I'm fine.
That sound?
I'm fine.
Okay, so I'm a as a working number, we'll use 500,000. And then I'll consider that as part of Heather, make sure that we capture that because that that is a policy amendment. That was the governing body as far as administrative expenses. That that overall budget goes from 695K to to 700. And I can't, there's there's no one particular line item that that's attributable to. It's just many of those have small increases in them. One of the things that we are going to see in in overall communication lines, we are going to have some more expenses on some of our cybersecurity issues with the back shop protection processes and products that we're going to have to put in place. So there are comm lines throughout each of the departmental budgets and funds that where those will be reflected in. Moving on to the police budget, probably the big ticket items that that budget is relatively the same. It does overall see a $50,000 piece. What is not in there is the additional detective that the chief had asked for. The what this does include, I'm sorry, and I I believe I probably missed it whenever I did the highlights of it. The administ it reflects a full-time administrative position in the budget. Right now, it's a part-time, halftime position. But this budget does reflect a full-time position for the administrator over there.
An administrator for the police department?
Yes, sir.
Someone that would man the office?
Mm-hmm.
And so that will translate into at least during the work week, there is a number to call if you have a non-911.
That's a operational question for the chief.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So yes, that would they their hours would coincide with the normal operating business hours of the town is what that position would be. And they would they would man our phone lines, but they would also have other responsibilities to include some DCI and seizure standards where they could help maintain some files and paperwork and criminal records to to assist us in other areas outside of just answering the phone.
And are we going to have some sort of a plan that during season, we have some sort of phone manning during the weekend? Because we discussed that as as a sort of a gap where we have people coming in and out in the first few days. And if there is an issue, again, we have things that are not 911. And so and we did discuss the fact that this is a seven-day-a-week kind of thing during our busy season.
Right. And and we've I've looked at and talked to some people about trying to come up with some options. And I've I've got some very very rough ideas, but none of them are solid enough that I feel comfortable coming to you and saying, hey, this is a solution. So it is something we're still working on. But to answer your question, no, I don't have a solution 100% for the nights and weekends and and all of that. This this honestly just handles the daytime part of it.
Well, season is upon us. I think that I think that having something for Saturdays and Sundays is, you know, at least for that busy time of day, which you always say is roughly 10:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. I think that's, I'm not putting pressure on you, but I think that's something that needs to be fine-tuned pretty quick if there's if there's something we're going to do for this year.
Okay.
Well, we don't have the money to do anything for this year until this. This is the budget that starts on July. Whatever chief does operationally to do that kind of thing is the budget, the current budget doesn't doesn't reflect the funding to support that.
I know, and it'd be it'd be a month worth of something that we'd have to find money for. But at the very least, we have something to start July 1st, which kicks off into 4th of July weekend. Can you remind me why overtime is staying so high? Or has is is again, I thought one of the issues of hiring that extra the extra staff was our overtime would go down. And it's it it actually went up over the budget of estimate of last year.
We we project overtime based just based on a straight ratio of what the salary line is and and don't dictate that on whether or not it comes down. So if if it does in fact come down, it comes down. But as far as what we've seen historically, it we have overtime that's directly related to what and it holds true that the overtime, if you got 100 cops, it's going to be the same ratio. Overtime costs you the same amount. I think that's I think that what we've come to realize is that the assumption that overtime will come down if you hire extra slots or extra people, in my mind, that that doesn't hold true. But here's the thing about overtime. Here's the thing about overtime. We don't budget for storms, but when storms happen, I got to spend overtime. So if you want to have cops here during a storm, we got to have overtime. Because I can't put them out there to spend overtime if I don't have a budget for it.
David, this salary line, does that include the open position that we have now?
Yeah, but that position is getting ready to be filled.
Going to take that. But the detective position, that's.
It's not in here.
And so the 89,000 equipment is for the new hire, correct? We have equipment 89,000 this year.
Chief, you want to talk about 89,000?
Yes, yes. So the equipment line is actually for an integrated in-car and body camera system. We're we're running just a dated in-car camera system. We got no body cameras. I get that one. Anyway, and the 89,000 is and the equipment line is to integrate a an updated camera system that also integrates body cam with in-car cameras. So it's all one system that operates and functions together.
You might you might as well talk about the comm line, too.
Okay, did you get all that?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the communication line is for a computer automated dispatch system that integrates with the county's dispatch. So we have better automated communications between them instead of relying 100% on just radio traffic. When they get a call, it'll actually come to the officer's computers in the car. They can see all the call notes. They can see the call history on that house. If it's, you know, if we've been that house once or we've been to it 100 times. You know, it gives a lot of history and a lot of information to provide a lot of officer safety with with the calls. But it integrates with the county's dispatch system. So it's it's all trying to, everything in in the world, as you know, is now is getting automated and integrated. And we're just trying to catch up and keep up with some of those automations and integrations so that our systems are functioning, you know, together.
And this system is integrated with the Brunswick County Sheriff's Department? And they're all using this same type of system?
That that is correct. They they are, the sheriff's offices, several other law enforcement agencies are. It has a lot of features in it. And to be honest, the the price point that we packaged here is is kind of the base model. There's all kinds of bells and whistles that, you know, me and the town manager, when we were going through it, we we knocked a lot of those bells and whistles out and tried to try to do this as reasonable as possible. But but this this gets us integrated into dispatch and it also adds body cameras and in-car cameras to all of our officers.
And it's compatible with the system or the computer system that we have now or?
Yes, yeah, well, this this will include the software that's that's required to to get everything together. It's a it's a full package.
Total package.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it's a standalone system that does not integrate with our other IT because there are particular there are particular security protocols that have to be firewalled from normal IT operations.
But all that is included in this 105?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Two questions.
Okay.
Are we fully staffed now? Have we filled the two spots that were authorized during the last budget process?
So the one, we have sent paperwork off to the state. We're still waiting on that certification to come back. And that officer will take the oath soon, hopefully. But that that will be the last position, yes.
Okay. And so when when I look at the 89,000, the the cameras, the body cameras, they're they're about $8,000 apiece?
I do not have the exact number in front of me, but that's that's roughly for the for the camera. But that, like I said, that's with the in-car integration as well.
I thought the in-car integration was the 105,000, a separate allocation of 105,000.
Is which line are you looking at, communications or equipment?
I was I was asking you about equipment.
Equipment, yes, equipment, the 89 is for in-car and body camera. It's it's one system to do two cameras.
That's it. So like I said, it's about $8,000, $7,500 apiece for the body cam?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me ask you, while we're talking about equipment.
Yes, sir.
Do we have defibrillators in the cars?
We have some defibrillators, not one in every vehicle, no, sir.
Well, I think we should put that in the budget because if I have a heart attack, I don't want the guy with the defibrillator to be off duty.
They're they're in the office. They're they're not off duty, they don't go home. They they stay they stay here where we can grab them. We have two defibrillators.
Don't, not to tell you how to do your business, chief, but wouldn't it be better if when a police officer came on duty, they took that defibrillator and put it in their car?
Yes, sir.
Rather than coming having to come to the office to pick one up?
I could not agree with you more. And those are actually some practices that I'm working on changing. That that is something we've looked at, believe it or not. That's there's a few things internally that we're looking at changing.
Do we know how much they are?
Yeah, do we?
I I do not have a price point. I couldn't couldn't tell you that, to be honest.
How about if we just price them? We just price them? How about if we just price them? We just price and put one in each car?
And, and one other?
Yes, sir.
While, while we're talking about using police officers after storms and things like that, I think it's time that the town purchased a drone. So that?
We're going to talk about inspections in a minute.
Oh, inspection's going to do a drone, okay. Ju- just for post hurricane so that people would get an opportunity to look at the?
We, we're going, we're going to let the inspector talk about that.
Just a quick Google search, rough price point is about $1,700 apiece for.
Yeah, dude, I need a pen.
When we first brought this up, a few years ago, there was some talk about the officers not being trained. Are all the officers trained in using a defibrillator?
Yes, we've, we've all, everybody's current on their CPR, AED, everything. We've, we've done that training this year and, and gotten everybody caught up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on, on that part?
The other question I have is when will we see the, the vehicles, the, the new vehicles? Do you got any timeline on that?
That's a good question. I would, I would love to see them. We, we ordered them back, you know, at, at the very first of, of this 2021 budget. And, uh, the excuse, everybody we talked to says COVID. Um, I've, I've heard that a million times. We finally gotten the vehicles themselves. They've been delivered to the upfitter. And now the upfitter is giving us the same, um, I, I don't want to call it excuse by reason. He's dragging behind. He's just having a hard time getting equipment from lights to cages. Um, you know, everything involved. So, but they, they are at the upfitter and they are being worked on. I do not have a timeline for how much longer it's going to be.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Body cameras, are, are they mandatory in the police department or is that an optional equipment, piece of equipment?
We don't have body cameras at all now.
I, I know. But, but is there any mandate that says that a police officer has to have a body camera?
No, there, in North Carolina, there is not yet. Um, preemptively, I think, I mean, if y'all watched any news, I think within the next four to five years, you will see it across the country that it is mandated. Um, I, I prefer to be ahead of the curve. I just, I, I think they're crucial. If, if you watch the news at all, it just, it's for officer protection. It's for the community's protection. It's, they're just, I, I can't find one downfall to them. So.
Move on to inspections. Um, I'll, I'll let Mr. Evans, um, who is our, uh, current resident Clemson-trained drone pilot, um, almost finished with that course, talk about, uh, the drone operations. But suffice it to say, this budget does include, um, a new position in there that, uh, I believe Tim wants to use them primarily as a plan reviewer and, um, and, and a new vehicle. But I'll let Tim talk about.
All right. Um, our budget's pretty much the same. Um, there is a vehicle in there. Um, and that vehicle is not for, uh, a new hire. That particular vehicle is to replace one of the two vehicles that have, that far exceed our mandate for when they need to be replaced. Uh, one, one y'all have already allocated funds to, to replace, and this is to, to replace the other one. Uh, we intend to roll down one of the two existing vehicles. Uh, we'll, we'll have them assessed and determine which one will be best to roll down to the new hire if y'all sort of approved the budget. Um, the new hire that we're planning on hiring, um, my intentions are, uh, for the future. Um, I've hired a lot of people. I've hired, I've hired and trained inspectors from as green as you can get. And I've hired and trained plan reviewers. The best options for new inspectors is, is a combination of some inspections, education, and plan review. You can't learn any faster, any better than that way. So it is my intention that the new person be integrated into the plan review position uh, to assist with, with expediting permits. Um, it'll be slow at first, but it will get better. Um, and, uh, to assist, uh, with, uh, the coordination with contractors, uh, to help expedite those and to issue those permits. That way they learn everything from cost estimate, cost constructions, uh, contractor's licensing rules, right on down to, uh, what it requires to, to meet the code uh, in the process of learning to do inspections at the same time and code enforcement and zoning. Uh, because I don't, I, I know that most of you know this, but most places have individuals who perform individual portions of the jobs that me and Rhonda, uh, co, uh, uh, habitat i- inside of our job descriptions. Um, we, we, we're very knowledgeable and we do a lot of things across the board that other places, uh, make into individual jobs. A new plan review will help us with our core responsibilities. Um, and it's, it's really needed. It's been needed for a little while now.
Tim, this also gives you a plan B. In other words, if something would hopefully not happen to either one of you, you'll have somebody to be able to carry on the program.
Well, the biggest thing is me is Rhonda right now is a county officer, so am I. Rhonda's a zoning officer, but so am I. Um, anything Rhonda does, I can do. Rhonda goes on vacation. Was it take a week or two to go on vacation? She can. I cannot. There's several reasons. One is, there's a general statute that says because this is my jurisdiction and because I'm a singular inspector, I have two and a half days. And that is a timeline frame that fits into statute. But once a permit is scheduled, that's how long I have before I can either be charged gross incomplence for not doing it or the town is required to, um, uh, produce out of what they, what new statute says is out of a, a pool for retired inspectors going and you end up having to pay them to do the job. So I can't go on vacation and I can't have an accident at this point. So this person, what's, what's higher?
Trained would have the same capabilities as me and also be able to assist Rhonda as well. Um, because with a three-man person, and I'll go ahead and tell you, we got three people on staff. I got one sick at home today and I've got another one who has a doctor's appointment that's already been set for this afternoon. This is a constant. Three sta- three people staffing that office is, i- it is a miracle, and I've said it every budget year, that we haven't had three people with the flu and a disaster. So, uh, I think it's more than one good reason why we need to put another person in that department. One, the biggest one's the future.
But that, they won't need a vehicle?
Excuse me?
Will they need a vehicle?
Yeah, we're going to roll one of the existing ones down to them. That's what, that's what I said, yes. Um, so, uh, uh, if you got any more questions, I'd be glad to answer.
This is just a general question, I guess, across all departments, only because I was just at the county budget meeting and they were really focusing on making sure they had their gasoline allowances accounted for because of the continuing increase in gas prices. Have we just sort of done a, a standard across all the departments and we feel comfortable with it?
That's another one of those, uh, alphanumeric trends that we, we, you know, try to hit somewhere in the middle. Because if I could project what gasoline was going to be over a year, I wouldn't be in this business. Um, but, but that's a, that's pretty much as close as we can get it.
I just, because if we're going to have another person in the department and we are estimating now gas, oil, tires, 4,000 to 5,000, that, and that just triggered the question in my mind.
Well, if, if I'm doing inspections, he's not going to be. So it's not going to be two trucks running, you know what I mean? If, if Rhonda needs assistance, that means that her truck's not running. It, do you follow what I'm saying? I, I, I actually thought about that, but I don't see how that is a thing. And as far as the, the dollar amount, um, as all people do that runs budgets, like David said, this is a good guess. But this guess is actually, my guess is actually based off of the higher prices in the years that I've been here, not the prices at this time.
Um, you were, you were going to talk about the drone.
Okay. Well, right now I'm trying to run a model that ran five hours. So when you want me to talk about a drone, I really want to cut my wrist. But anyway, uh, this has been one of the, I guess because I got a little age on me, I love a good challenge. But I did take, uh, I, I've been taking in a course for quite a bit now, uh, which is a drone course. Um, I've passed the FAA exam, uh, Pollex exam for small UASs. And, um, uh, and I've learned everything from how to, uh, uh, get approval from the FAA to fly in, in areas to where you can fly and where you can't fly, to how to make 3D modeling of standard structures and, uh, reconstruct pictures into models, 3D models. I can also, I've learned how to, uh, tell you how big a house is after taking pictures, um, from my, from my computer. Um, it's pretty amazing. It's pretty fascinating stuff. Uh, the technology is run way, way out there far. Um, if I can somehow manage to complete this last model, I might pass the class. I don't know. Um, right now I'm doing pretty good in it, but, but I, um, I'm, it's been tough. I was here all weekend working on it. Uh, but the intent of the drone is to, I intend to hopefully be able to, and I've learned a few things since then, be able to map our unvegetated areas of the dunes and our dune areas and create a 3D mapping. I also hope to be able to map the island's services, uh, say the, uh, fire hydrants, the water meters. In case we have a storm that washes over the island, we can actually take our pictures. We can then reconstruct those pictures that we have and then take more pictures of what's existing. And we can be able to look at the whole picture on the ground. What we can do, what, what I should be able to do when I pass this class is take a picture of the whole island and make you one big picture. And then it be actually geodata synced to longitude and latitude when I get done so that you can pinpoint where something's on that map on ground that doesn't look anything like it anymore. That is my, that's my goal for, for what we intend to do with the drone. But we can also take pictures of the whole island before the storm comes and, and then have them to review afterwards. So it's very complicated.
This is, uh?
And at 60, 59 years old, I ain't young no more. Yeah.
You got it. This, we're also gonna, um, and when we get over into the water and sewer budget, talk about how, um, some of the, the geolocating, uh, services that we've included priced in that budget are going to synchronize with the capabilities that the drone, uh, technology provides to us. Um, and we, we can, we can talk about that then too.
Okay, ju- just to clarify for me. So it'll, it'll benefit the town. It'll benefit the administration of the town. That'll be all good, good things. But will, will it be, will it have the capability? Will we have somebody with the capability to use that drone? So that somebody who lives in Ohio, who's worried about the condition of their house after the hurricane, will be able to look at the town website and be able to look and see if their property is still in good condition under border or has lost a roof?
Well, you can, if they, I, I, now, I'm going to caution you that in order to, to create a 3D model, that they could see that, every piece of their house like that?
No, no, just to overview.
Well, to fly over view and take, take pictures, it, yes, we'll have somebody with the capability to do that. That's what I've been training to do this whole entire time, is we'll be able to fly over and take pictures. And, um, whether you want an individual house, we'll have to find out where it is on the picture because we'd have to put in 2,100 ground points and track all the pictures to them to be able to locate somebody's house by address. But if somebody wanted their house done, you know what I mean, let's say three or four weeks after the storm when we're not so busy and they, I would suggest that we have them pay for that service. I could go out there. I could fly around the house, take pictures from all directions, and then we could email them the pictures. Yeah. The biggest, one of the biggest things of this is, and contractors on the board should listen to this. If we chose so choose and if we had the manpower and the time, we will be able, and, and it'll become, everywhere is going to be like this. We will be able to take the pictures of a new home, make a 3D model of it, of that home. And then 10 years from now, when someone adds a deck, we'll be able to look at it from all four sides with the dimensions and location, determine if work was ever done on that house without a permit a- at any time. In other words, it, it will have great benefits as far as tax values and that kind of stuff. And at the same time, if we have 3D pictures of that building, we can actually look through that building to the building on the other side. We can remove that building and look at the building on the other side to see if the same thing's happened there. It's, it's, the technology is just unbelievable. It is just, it's amazing what you can do with those things. I, I could talk about it for hours, but right now I'm just trying to pass the class.
Uh, suffice it to say, I think that one immediate capability we're going to get, hurricane comes through, once the wind dies down, uh, we'll be able to put, um, somebody in a truck, drive down the island, fly the drone and get, uh, basically the equivalent of the governor flying over in the helicopter doing a, 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 a tactical assessment of how bad we were hit. And then also depending on the level of damage with some of the data that's going to be collected uh, for water and sewer, if we have to do road clearing, uh, exercise like that, we'll be able to, um, clear the roads without knocking the valve pits and the water lines and the fire hydrants over at the same time. Especially with the way the technology is integrated now with, um, uh, heavy equipment operators and their equipment. I mean, they're, they, you put the, load data up if you've already got it and pretty much the bulldozer drive itself. Yeah. Um, anything else on inspections? Uh, moving over to building and grounds, and if I could, uh, uh, in talking about buildings and grounds, this is the budget where we're going to do the street paving project. Uh, that's actually the next to the last line on, uh, the, the worksheet. That's where the seagull paving line is. And if I could refer to the second page of your capital improvement plan. The first page is the revenues, uh, mostly. And then the, the second page, um, actually has the, uh, the general fund expenses there and primarily the expenses on the capital plan. Uh, we've arrayed the streets resurfacing program, uh, in that. Um, and just to remind everybody, that'd have been scoped at about $100,000 or a penny of taxes a year in there. What we're doing this year is we're moving that priority, uh, scheme one year to the right. The, they'll still keep their same priorities, but we're moving them all to the right and substituting the seagull project in there for the current year. So that's what we're doing, doing there on that. That's what that $145,000 in the, um, buildings and grounds line correlates to in the capital plan and the paving, the resurfacing program.
A question. In the paving of Ocean Boulevard, when we, when we had the people from DOT, there was some discussion about being able to help with the flooding and runoff, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have any money allocated in this budget? Or I guess I have to ask the question?
No, sir. Answers, no, no, sir. Other than just, you know, mud puddle fixing kind of stuff. We do not have an appropriation for that kind of thing.
Have, have we discussed with the Department of Transportation the potential to remedy some of the flooding on Ocean Boulevard? And why it may cost to do that?
Well, if, if you recall, we specifically asked them if that resurfacing and installation of the bike lanes included any stormwater fixes, and they said it did not. And they, they alluded to helping us assemble an estimate on it. But as part of that, that's a, that's a to-be-developed estimate. Um, you know, if we need a number on that, the best way to do it is for us to go ahead and get our consultant engineer to help us, to help us come up with a, with a fix on what that might cost. Um, I mean, we know where those areas are, it's like the three-hundred block, it's down there in the seven-hundred block, I believe. So, if, if that's what you want to do, that's, you know, for, from a budgetary side, we can accommodate that in, you know, to make an appropriation. Now, what it would cost, I don't know.
I, I got you, but I, I think this is the opportunity for us to make that type of expenditure, of course. We're not gonna get an opportunity to have the road paved again, and you'd wanna fix it while, while work is being done, so.
Uh.
Up to my colleagues, but I would suggest that.
I've had several conversations with, uh, DOT, and I actually done a drive-around with them after we first started talking about this, uh, Mike. And it's pretty limited to what they can actually do, but as far as the expense incurred with that, that being a DOT road, if there was something that they could do, I would feel that cost would be on them, the, the burden of that. Because like I said, it is a DOT right-of-way, and I don't see where we would have to pay for it. I know that don't sound like too clear of an answer, but-
I, I, but, but that begs the question, if, if it's go, if we're gonna have the project done, is the project gonna include that?
The only thing that I know of this time is what he spoke about, it may be possible they could do some kinda little French drain deal there. They spoke of, basically, as far as I know. I rode this beach, the whole beach with them, I showed them all the DOT catch bases that were already there. And I had a real big concern about here on the east end, because, uh, you know, as bad as that one is on the three-hundred block right here on the east end, right there at Bullet Street, there's a pipe that goes from, uh, goes under the boulevard. It goes out to the waterway, it's been there for a long time. There's nothing on record by the easel wall, but it's a DOT pipe, and if something ever happens to that pipe, Dr. Beattie, this whole east end is gonna be in dire trouble. If that pipe ever goes away, you can't put one back. You know, you could up, do up people elsewhere, but it's not being easel, they're all behind and worked out.
Again, but that's a Department of Transportation pipe?
Yeah, well, I seen it ten years ago, is my understanding, you know?
Okay. I guess I, I'm talking about the Ocean Boulevard project, then?
Well, that, that, that's part of Ocean Boulevard, because I spoke at the east, when I told them, you know, when I was talking with them, I was saying, we know, we know we've got issues now, and we had five that I asked for, uh, the east side of the road, however many feet it is. We know that's not gonna make it better, that's a reason we, that I'd asked the question in the first place. But I rode the whole beach with them, as far as coming up with a solution, I haven't heard any.
Wow. I guess I can only say what I, what I just said before, that this is the time for us to get some answers to who's responsible and what they can and can't do, and for us to decide what we're gonna do at that-
Yeah, and it also falls down to, like, if you have available property that you could do some kind of stormwater, uh, system, and you know where to actually put it at. It was an hour right-of-way, like, that one in the three-hundred block, I think it's a three-twenty-three or three-twenty-six. You know, if you go down that way, if you notice, there's a vacant lot there, and it's basically, all the vegetation debris is there, it's basically dead, where it's been flooded so many times, and every time a house is added to that area, you know, it just makes the worst of the boulevard. That one, the beautiful walk right there, is basically a stormwater pond. The Dr. Beattie was collapsed, somebody built a house on that. I wish it was like a property, but it's a big pond. And I even asked them about the scenario, would it be possible if, if it goes piping, with a catch basin layer, and carry it up High Point Street, and, and flow down, uh, the east side of High Point Street? But, you know, there is a stormwater ditch here, Barker Fifty-Five and stuff there, it may be possible to get it to. But, yeah, you're right, it would, but there isn't money in the budget for anything like that.
I, I mean, I do agree with Mike, and there is, in our draft objectives, the consolidation, there is a long-term plan objective that maybe the thing to do is see how we all feel about it in, in the pricing. But I agree that before the bike lanes go in and the repaving happens, this is kinda the time that, if we're gonna do a study and try to identify some better solutions, this is the time to do it. Maybe that's where the money that's there, whatever ends up being what we can take and use, um, maybe that, this is where it goes, I don't know. But stormwater is getting, we, we know it's getting worse. It's getting worse, and a lot of islands are addressing it with increasing engineering solutions, and that kinda means a study.
How about if we do this? How about if we assume that DOT's not gonna pay for it? And we, um, um, talk between now and the next budget meeting with our consultant engineer and see if we can get a swag on what might happen. And we can get a, we can get a budget number for, you know, a formal, uh, uh, report, but also maybe a placeholder in terms of what the infrastructure would cost. And that way, you know, we'll have something to push around, uh, and possibly integrate with the, uh, the bike paving project. I mean, if that, I mean, and if we can't get anything, can't get anything. But, um, I, I hear interest on, on doing that, and we'll, we'll see what we can come up with.
David, did you have some, something, uh, be asking for a grant to help with the bike path?
Yeah, the, uh, matter of fact, the most current, um, status on that, Christie sat in with me the other day. We had a conversation with the, the GSAT's, um, coordinating committee. And there is a, a formal call coming out for the grant. That application will be available the first of June. Um, and the projects will be due, I believe, the first of September. And then the, the letting calendar is going to be after that. So we should know what the, um, what the grant funds are that are available. And as a matter of fact, I believe that what we've done over in the B part fund, was that in this year's capital plan, or did we-
It's the capital plan.
Is it in next year's capital, that, next year's column, or did we put it in this year's budget?
It's in this year's capital-
Yeah.
And- When we updated the capital plan, I don't know if we edited it back into this year's budget or not.
Okay.
I'll put the line real quick, put it in the capital plan, but this year with the matching frame, isn't it?
So we, we put it in there. That let will be, that construction will be in the following fall. Not this coming winter, but the following fall.
Could that be gonna after the road's paved, or will that be gonna what?
It'll all be done at one time. But what it's gonna do, it's gonna back up the resurfacing, uh, from the spring to the fall. Well, I mean, because of the phasing on the directly attributable fed- federal funds for the bike lane, it's just gonna push it back. They could do the paving in the summertime, but y'all don't want that.
Oh.
We, we don't, we don't want that.
The bike path will be on both sides of the road?
Yep.
Five foot.
Five foot on each side, is what he told us, had to make, five on each side.
Uh, moving on to sanitation, I think the big-ticket item in sanitation is the dump truck, uh, for sanitation. We've, um, got a placeholder in there at a hundred thousand dollars. Chris, you wanna talk about how expensive those vehicles are?
Yeah, uh- Does that cost a little bit?
The vehi- the vehicle we're replacing is a nineteen ninety-nine model GMC. And we got that, that was purchased at Ballin' Vale, uh, in South Carolina, and the price tag of that truck was thirty-two thousand dollars. You, uh, I wish I could get ahold of another one just like it, but they don't even offer a truck like that anymore, so. I had shell shocked when I got the price of what it costs to get a single-axle dump truck. When you looked at, we used to get by for thirty-two thousand dollars, and now one costs a hundred grand. I mean, that's just, it's just unbelievable. But then again, when I'm looking at pickup trucks, it's costing forty and fifty thousand dollars. I guess it shouldn't have been that much of a shock to me, but I guess I'm just old school, you know? But we've got by with it for a number of years, huh?
How old's the old dump truck?
Nineteen ninety-nine model, it's bought brand new. Um, it's got about seventy thousand miles, I think, on it, and it's been rolled over on its side one time, turned back over. I mean, I, I've rebuilt, it oughta be pretty close new, because I've replaced about every part on it at one point in time. You know, I know it's kind of a tough bullet there to come up with a hundred grand there and being an apartment, I don't have any funding and resources, you know, a little bit of power bill money through the streets or whatever, uh, it is, you know, it's, it's bad to say it is what it is, and, and there ain't no way we can go on what we got and get by without doing it, because it just gets to the point where you start having to worry about people's safety and stuff, and something else time to take it off the road, or we could go out of the trucking business if you can't get something to the haul with, and that's just where I'm at.
I, I, I do wanna pile on that, uh, safety aspect of it. We, we've had some near misses with personnel and incidents with that truck. It needed to go.
Releasing the back sit truck, do you lease a dump truck or not?
I, I have a check that way over here, like, um, you probably could, but I don't know if it's, you know, it's one thing, you know, when you lease a truck that costs three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that if you start backing up on something that'll cost that much, probably enough lock on money, and you would be buying it straight out of the plug. It kinda clears you up there where you ain't sitting there with it dead every year. I guess there's lots in different places, would you hate?
Uh, another, another item, uh, from the sanitation line that I wanna bring your attention is the blue can home recycling. Uh, we're, we're not sure what's gonna happen with that, with the amendment on the, you don't get credit for a recycling can, um, or if it's gonna go up or down, just what that's gonna do. But that, um, that expense, there is a slight increase every year that's built into the contract, but pretty much we're projecting that, uh, there'll be an increase in that service to the turn about twenty-five percent from forty-five to fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Well, there's, you said something about when Tim was talking about the drone and being able to pinpoint locations of the different things. What about the, being able, I know they can pretty much figure out where the water meters would be, I would think. What about the, the pit valves and, and that kinda stuff, is there any way to mark those, or?
We're, we're actually, Chris gonna talk about in the water budget, okay, which is next up.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we get an estimate, is, is there much change for rollback with all cans getting rolled back instead of just empty?
I guess, uh, maybe, just to say that, why, because it will fail on the program.
There was no change in the price, the contractor gave me a verbal agreement that he could carry out what we needed. And this time, I, I hope he says that in the end, but, uh, that's what I got from him, so I did check, so that was good on his behalf.
So, we started rolling them all back as of, like, now?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got one suggestion, maybe, on the rollback program. Is there any way that the town of Holden Beach could supply the rollback personnel with some type of Holden Beach shirt or a vest or something to designate them as the rollback people, instead of just somebody watering up down the road around your house?
Well, I, I would think we could, and, um, we could do whatever you would like.
But in all reality, because he is a subcontractor, he's got his insurance and stuff, I don't know. And maybe that's me thinking too far ahead of the game, but I guess we could check and see.
You know, just like a, a plastic pull-up or-
I got you.
You know, something.
You wanna say something, something?
Yeah.
Yeah. But, let, let me go ahead and say, that's, that's not from a within existing resources, that's a new hire. Okay, that, that's not gonna save you any money on the contract.
Oh, no, it was just for the-
Or maybe have, uh, be a, be a subcontractor, Holden's Beach, uh, Service or something like that, Contract Services, Holden's Beach or something like that, one, one of the one-
I- is that what you're talking about? So, it, so use the same contractor, but, but, uh, have him to be, you know, like, the ATMC contract, identified as a Town of Holden Beach contractor? Not, not that you're, um, having an in-house labor Town of Holden Beach employee to do it?
One of the things that bothers me is, and I've had it mentioned to me, these renters especially, not necessarily a resident, look out the window and there's a strange person walking between their cars, uh, on the way to do something-
Absolutely.
I mean, that, it could become a, a bad situation.
Is, is that what you mean? I mean, I just jumped on the-
Same comms, uh, calls, you know, you put my telephone number and email on the website, and I've had, uh, a couple of people always fifteen on that site.
Yeah, they cost fifteen, twenty dollars a piece.
Okay, so, so what you're talking about is us having the contractor to, I'd, be identified as a, as a Town of Holden Beach contractor?
So, it's a subcontractor.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's not unusual, you know, whenever we have, uh, the surveyor to go on the beach, we give them a pass and that kinda thing, so, okay?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Uh, moving on in the water and sewer. Or y'all want some more trash?
We want, we trashed out.
Yeah. Um, I'll talk about the, uh, revenues in water and sewer. Most specifically, uh, the big-ticket item, of course, is to pass through, uh, the proposed county water increase. And what our water use charge line there reflects is passing through that, basically, what we think is going to be about two hundred thousand dollars of water by cost to the town, onto the town's customers. It also includes the loan proceeds for the outfit of the lift station number two at Greensboro Street. Uh, we were talking with the local government commission yesterday. Um, you are probably, uh, I believe that the engineers' request for proposal for that outfit, those, uh, requests for qualifications are due today at two o'clock. The engineer's selection package should be on the agenda for the May regular meeting. We think that we'll be able to do design specs sixty, ninety days after that. I think the draft schedule is shoveling the ground in October, so y'all gonna see some paperwork coming to you. Um, probably after bids are taken in, in the July, August timeframe, uh, so that we can go to the local government commission and not only, um, get the loan for this lift station, but also to pay ourselves back for the one that we just did. So that's, that's the revenue side. Chris, you wanna talk about expenses, is it?
Yeah. Um, we go down line by line, either way, anything y'all see there on page twelve that you got a question, you got a question about, I can answer. But flip it over, go past the admin department and get on the operations side, some of the big ticket items there, I can talk to that person. If anyone knows that I don't speak to, just ask.
Um, let's, let's go back to admin, let's go back to admin, sorry. I, I do want to point out that in the, the communications line, we're all going to have a, uh, the, uh, the contract for the automated meter read system. Uh, it is going to increase, uh, in that line, so that increases, you know, from fifty thousand to sixty thousand dollars a year.
And what about the irrigation meter inspection fees? Do we have a lot of new irrigation meters? I just noticed that it's.
Yes.
It's, I, I, I figured we might have a lot of new irrigation meters.
We've gained about fifty a year, and I'm wondering this year will that rate increase that the county's proposing? If that's going to go up or down, I mean, I don't have any.
Yeah.
I don't have any figures on water, that green grass, paying those kind of rates, or, or, you know, we just have to see what happens, that's what I'm looking for. Is there anything else on that to say?
No, I'm good.
We flip over to the, uh, to the other page on operational expenses, the facial services that David mentioned, we do have money in there to do a water rate study, which I do think would be a, a good thing, especially with the proposed rate increase, because we really need to know where we stand on that. Because this time, we don't have any of this as a bonus effect, but. One of the big tickets you see there, it shows up on revenue side, that one million, one hundred forty thousand dollars, that's basically the town's, uh, part of the cost of the truck, the plant there and supply there, we have a portion of. Contracted services, this kind of ties in, that one, uh, Rick was asking about long ago, and Tim's, uh, drum deal. That fifty thousand, there's actually, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars. That's to have Chris Stanley come on the island and start doing some map of, of water sewer lines, valves, fire hydrants, and all that good stuff, and, and this is not one, this is not saying this fifty-five thousand dollars is going to do the whole island. This is basically to get us started, and it's going to be something we're going to have to build to over years to create, to create what we need. Um, so one last thing that we have to do, we got wrapped up saying, there's a, there's a breaking barrier, there's a report for Ocean Boulevard, and you need to number the Santa Cruz and Roadblocks, or fire hydrants, or sewer valve, or whatever. Uh, we need to be able to do that, we've been a mighty pledge, and we haven't had that happen in quite some time. And we've actually pursued grant money, I think it was the year before last, the great engineer, and he accidentally did twice, and every year we come up a few probably short. And it's yet to the point where, you know, I know getting a free lunch here once in a while is a good thing, but it's yet to the point where my nerves can't take this struggle to die, hoping we're going to get a grant and get it straightened out, because like I said, every time we've come back out after a storm, it's bad up just being with a storm, or, you know, you can only imagine, I know I had that at probably Gerald Two, probably Brian, all of them seen some situations, we got sand on the street. That would be a horrible thing to have to deal with what we have now years ago, we had to have them, but at that time, all we had was a water system, but that sewer system with all that's involved with that, that just makes it that much more complex, so.
The, the key here is, is this is a first-rate survey grade, uh, data collection, I mean, it'll be down to the centimeter accuracy on the location of that stuff.
Like, we would take that out the bid if we were, if we were to agree on this, I mean?
Well, what I've done is I actually talked with a guy in Gerald, and I got hourly price, and we run some numbers on what we thought we could accomplish in an hour. And I was actually going to send one of our men with him, or maybe a golf cart or something, and, and have some of the stuff located in flag where it won't take him that long, but, you know, him sitting there on the shell, and on top of the valve pit or something, so I've got all that done and handled for him. I'm thinking he'll be able to go through it pretty quick and, and, and off pretty good bit of it out, and after we get started, we get a very good feel for it. And right now, I just wanted to mainly focus on ocean, I want to do the whole island, but right now, I'll get, you know, the water first, and then we'll see where we're at with that.
Uh, but, Chris, I, I think we want to make sure that the, uh, specify that that value's fifty-five thousand dollars, that, all that fifty-five thousand dollars isn't for that service.
Yeah, I was about thirty-five, I would have, if I was that right, here's what the taxes would be for that.
The, the other twenty thousand dollars is if we need to get some extra help on a, when a big job happens, emergency repair happens, we got to muster up some more manpower.
Yeah. My only concern is, is like, I just feel like it needs to be sent out the bid when we start it, you know, and, and get two, three bids on it.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, that, that, that's the fair way of doing it, you know?
Equipment purchase water, that's the next thing that I see there is probably, well, back, back up before that, I purchased a resale of that, uh, six hundred thirty thousand dollars. The reason that number has increased is just like David alluded to earlier, about, that's half a year, that new, new rate that we'll be paying back after the county. Uh, equipment purchase for water, it's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, that includes the pickup truck, that generator for pump lift station up and forth. That generator is there right now, it's the same generator that we've got from two thousand and six, when we first started to assist them up. And I've had some issues on it a little bit, we've got corrosion issues, and also parts, it's downright impossible to get a, a part for anything now. I don't know, but yes, with all, since all the coating, uh, started, if anything's got any kind of wet tints or something, and it's difficult to get, so I've been waiting two months on the, on the sensor, on that generator, but it does need to be replaced. I know that's probably close sixty thousand dollars of that coating, but, and, but basically, the company's doing business there, they are in a bad place, you know, those cars, you know, salt air and stuff get to them, I know we spoke to you in the past, uh, last year, Brian was asking me to know any way maybe we could promote, promote the line. But basically, you know, I've got a, a generator there, and it's got aluminum enclosure on it, just like, you know, we got it here back in this building. But anti-deposits are, are regular steel, you know, and, you know, you got to have air, I mean, so, I, I have to figure out a way to deal with that. I can't put one in a, in a utility trailer to run it or anything, but you got to have things to cool, and it exhausts and all that, and it just, it's tough. I'd just like to stay ahead of the game where we can replace one of them, you know, I've been here one year, and so I need four, I mean, so, you know, that's, it's expense, but I don't, I don't really know how to eliminate it. I've got to make this contract with a guy there to just help me some things, like maybe some coat or something, put on the axles, and see if that helps anything, that's why I want to try it. And I'm hoping maybe we pull it out of service, maybe we meet the market, or something, and, and sell it and get, use that out of dollars or something like that, and get something to go back, I mean, but. We got to start somewhere.
Well, now, he was nice enough to give me a, a tour of all the generators, and of course, if you look at them from the outside, you know, that'd be an aluminum casing or, or cover. It looks good to open the door. And if you, uh, he does, like you said, if we don't replace them, as we have one a year, as we go, we'll end up, uh, to a point where we got to replace all four. And there are some resale values for those, I feel sure.
Yeah, well, I know we can get something, I know what that would be, I don't know, but, you know, if I get them pulled out of service, and I get them in that shop, we can make them look, uh, we can have them look like they were something, probably get some, some good return, and that's what we want to try. Um, good, sorry.
I'm sorry, tell me why they have to, why we can't keep them across the bridge and bring them over when, as needed?
Well, I'll use this for example, Gerald, I meant, uh, Brian, let's just say Saturday night, power goes off, nobody's on this island. Uh, I've got employees, and they got lives away from here, you know, they out with their family, or they out of town or something. Um, power was off here at pump station one, but the power was good at pump station two. But pump station two's going to be sending sewage in through this wet well right here, and that guy that I can't get ahold of, get over and get that generator here in time. Those wet well pumps are not going to run, and the sewer's going to start up flowing out of that wet well right there, and then it's going to be running that Jordan Boulevard, possibly up the back of that bridge here in the border lane. And then we're going to be on the news explaining how I couldn't get up a scog or a burden or something, I could get over and get the generator, we have to, the generator here in time, that's the time.
And that, that's, that's a two-person job.
But the other part of it is, is years ago, I used to operate that way. But we had an inspection, it was two thousand and fifteen, and the main guy that does our inspections with the sewer, he's the one that made us buy the other three generators. Because when we first got this system, it had one generator, and we had called up three at one time, it gives us a certain length and time to have some. I mean, I, you know, that's a one, you know, if you can do that, and they last for probably all along, but they won't let you get by, let's say, like I got one in the building up here across the bridge, that one something over there, when it goes out and deep and fire, and the people go right then, and that's the reason why we're red, it ain't really all the way I say so, you know? Because yeah, I like those things in the building, you can take care of it, but at the same time, you know, that same scenario, like I just told you, I can understand we're not being concerned, so, because that could be a problem, it'd be the same thing at four.
Yeah, number four.
You know, you got sewage at three pumping there, and if the power goes off at three, and you still have the power here, and it's standing something down there, and there's no way to, for them to communicate with each other, it creates a potential for massive sewer speed.
And the fire for that, or?
The way I live, I'm sure they're not cheap, I don't want to fire that, I know that. And it does got my license, I know I was having a little pain, I keep it on.
I guess, I just assumed they'd all go down, so, we wouldn't be feeding them, but I, if they got me.
Does that make sense, what it's like?
Yeah, yeah.
Can't believe it, that's got a scary, that's a scary thought, dude.
Yeah, if one stayed running, the other, I, I would just assume if power was out, the power would be.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm a leechy, because I was thinking that too for a while, and then I got the.
Then it happened.
Especially after that guy come and talked to me, and that time you had me eating him, he kind of beat that in my head, now he forgot it.
So, there's, there's fire problem that went through there.
Yeah. Another part of that expense there, I think there's about fifteen thousand dollars or so, is some new, some new born, uh, equipment, that's the water taps and sewer taps, uh, and it, especially if we ever get the bike lanes, it's definitely, we need it now, because what we got to be doing taps with is pretty difficult to do with taps. We've got to get a water line or sewer line up under Ocean Boulevard. All we got to have at one time, the deal there is spaces of hands, really, with a gas motor on it, or a big version of that. But, uh, when they do those bike lanes, you're going to be talking about another five foot of asphalt on each side of the street, plus the sidewalk, and everything we've got is going to be buried up in asphalt, that's going to just take something, other than what I've got to do a water tap with. So, that's another issue.
Can we pull them out before they do bike lanes? How many is left to be, I can't imagine there'd be a lot left.
I, there's probably a lot more than you than.
Probably.
Than you, than you realize, I mean, everywhere that'd be a place, if wild, that you'd be, you know, depending on which side of the road it's on, you know, you go in there and do a, a water tap. I'll use the example right now, this has got nothing to do with the taps right here in front of us, uh, when you come off the bridge here, coast of the Vettel though. The water line there right now is actually two feet up under the concrete, that curve that you see there, just, yeah, for water to get up, water line's under that. You go, there's about five or two of the asphalt on top of that, once you get to the other side, and you figure in the sidewalk, that's, that's pretty long boards, but, uh, the deal I'm going to try to replace to do with is actually a, a air compressor, and it's basically like an air hammer, some of the same technology, as you saying, uh, eight, uh, TMC, using what they done the fiber optic install, installed all over the island. I hate to have to go through that, but, uh, it's really the only option. And you can do a lot of damage when you start doing something like that, too, because once you start hammering something in there, I said that thing's basically an air hammer, and it's often in a case under the roof, if it hits a, a water line, or a power line, something in between, yeah. Uh, but it is what it is, you know, it's called doing business, you know? But that's pretty much about that whole hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, just forward, anybody's got any questions, anything, I'd be the best answer. Um, going up under that, uh, can't quite find that major equipment, that sixty-four thousand, uh, seven, seventy-three, that's payment on the trip that we done lease purchase on it, we got a, a few months ago. And I would love to thank the board for, uh, making that happen, that was, that was a neat piece.
Was that the vacuum truck?
Yes, sir. And, you know, E O C debt, I guess, that, that ninety-three thousand, three thirty-five there, that's paid maximum to E O C, sending it there. I don't see anything else that really stands out in my mind, but if y'all see something that you, uh, stick some money, just ask me, if I can't give you the answer, I will refund that for you.
In our budget, Chris, where the bleachers and that kind of thing for our activities?
It'd be missed first.
Being your B part access and recreation line.
And I'm going to use that as a cue to move on into B part, if that's okay? Um, accommodation tax, first page there, and I'll talk to revenues, and then Chris can talk to expenses, as, as you may wish. Um, we're, uh, we're projecting a, a banner year on the occupancy tax at, um, two, two point seven six million dollars there. Uh, the other big ticket items are the, uh, transfer from the beach inlet and capital reserve, you'll see that on the expense side. That's for the dredging of the Lockwood Folly Inlet, to provide funding for the Lockwood Folly Inlet throat, and then the Lockwood Folly Inlet crossing, where's the sand comes from. So, that's navigation and a navigation maintenance project that puts sand up on the beach. Then you'll see a half million dollar fund balance appropriation there, and that's the town's portion of the core study.
As far as expenses go, everything that's in the B part for this year is pretty much contractor project based with no large changes. The only large change is really, um, Lockwood Folly dredging, which David just addressed, but it is the year for us to get the, um, crossing. Um, those numbers are not, have not been supplied, supplied to us by the board with a definite cost yet, but it, they told us it would be like the last time about, until they can give us a better estimate, which is what we usually deal with, with them on that kind of maintenance, so we went with last time's numbers. Um, there is a change in, the core is suggesting, and because of all the issues with inlet closing up, that we move to something that's like a quarterly plan, it's more like every eight to nine weeks that the inlet would be dredged with the merit to do some maintenance dredging, that cost is shared with the county and the state. Um, luckily, we are able to, um, utilize state funds for that and the, um, Oak Island, so we all share in that cost. In order to move from the spot dredging that they usually call us up when they're coming down the waterway and say, we're on the way, can you give us some money? This would go ahead and budget for a year's worth of maintenance, and again, they would be out there on a regular schedule about eight to nine weeks at the time. They, uh, preface that on, that's pretty much what they do at Carolina Beach Inlet, and they think that's a better system, so that number's included. Um, and then the only other thing that I will point out that would be special is in your professional services beach line, we do need to do an update of our permit for our shallow draft inlet permit, and that is if for some reason the core stopped dredging the inlet. We would have our own ability to do that, or if we wanted to do a special project in the inlet, we would have the ability to do that. The engineers estimated that at sixteen-five, cost estimate to do that modification and permit for both. And then the only other thing that looks out of place, if you're comparing with, um, the twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and that's because we've had budget amendments, so the number that's in the twenty twenty-one is not the number we started with in July, is the concerts line. It looks like we're going from eighty-six, six, to thirty-seven, five, but we started in July with thirty-four in that line. And with the storm, we hit it through budget amendments to, to do other things, because we knew we weren't having concerts, so it's really just going from thirty-four to thirty-seven. And that mainly is because we added a big main band, and all the bands didn't get to play anywhere last year. anywhere last year, and they're hungry, so each one of them are adding about a hundred or two dol- two hundred dollars to their contract, and when you've got fifteen of them, it adds up. Other than that, if y'all have any questions, those are the highlights of the major changes.
I just have a question on the beach vegetation. It goes back to having that presentation from N C State. Does that also include doing some soil sampling where they, uh, suggested we might want to check salinity to see whether or not some alternative beach vegetation types would be better in high chloride areas?
If we decide to move forward with that, when it gets time to do that, we can. I think internally, we've talked about that a little bit, and we believe that that's more a factor of those are low spots in the dunes that occur, and every time we get a storm, that's where it happens. If we decide, the board decides you guys want to do that type of testing, we can try to do it, and I think we can accommodate it in that number. The majority of this, that number for vegetation is mainly for planting that would be outside the project scope for this coming year, because we hope to put a project on the ground starting in November, and all of those costs for vegetation and sand things are accounted in our storm damage, and they would be in the other fund.
Okay. My one point is if we're going to have somebody come in and do a look and give up an idea recommendation, it's a good idea to do a check on whether or not what their hypothesizing is true. So I'm not saying do it everywhere, but you could do a couple, you could do a program of spot checks to see whether or not the hypothesis does fit. Um, and it, again, it was just something I noted after the presentation, that it's a good hypothesis. A little bit of science will tell us whether it's true or not.
What we'll do there is we'll ask the Brunswick County Soil and Water Conservation District to come and give us an advisory on that. Uh, the David Nash, who is the godfather of sea oaks, uh, and was, uh, responsible for a lot of the sea oat and vegetation plantings, uh, through the Soil and Water District here in Brunswick County, is now deceased, but, um, there's a, there is a lingering presence of, of science in that district up there, and that's what we'll do on that. We'll get that done for nothing.
And just to go back to David's previous question about the bike lanes, and I think Gerald asked about the bike lanes, the capital plan this week, you got it today was done after these worksheets are initially done, and I do not see that it reflects that the bike lanes are currently in there, and they're in the capital plan for this budget, but their portion of expenses is not shown in this, but that'll need to be updated for your next court call.
I understand you're going to be in charge of Beach Ranger program now, okay? One of the things that was discussed in the overall part-time police, um, group was having some part-time and generally probably retired policemen doing Beach Ranger duties to add some additional authority to the position. It doesn't have to be all of them, but it could be part of them so that at any, on any one day, there is a part-time, whether they're retired or not, police officer on the strand as part of Beach Ranger. I personally think that it's a reasonable idea, it's a good idea, and I don't know exactly how much more it would add to have to hire part of the staff, be part-time police, but I think that it's something that we should explore and try to do. If nobody else is going to support this, then it's not going to go anywhere. But again, we had other beach towns that talked about Beach Rangers and having the part-time police, retired police doing it, and I'm, and it's just for all the reasons of the visibility is different and the sort of level of authority is different.
My only suggestion is the Beach Rangers, and instead of, can we not have a Beach Ranger that would be able to communicate with the police? Or someone that would be able to give a citation, an ordinance citation, not a traffic citation?
That's not the intent of, of the program, and, and we're going to work that into our training program. The intent of this is a public relations outreach to inform and educate, um, and that if there are any gross violations, we're going to establish a means of communication with the police department.
Good, okay. I've been watching those for the past couple of years, and it just, other than just riding up down the beach, I don't see a lot of other benefit from it.
Well, during our, um, working group session and the interview with the Ocean Isle Beach police officer, the police chief, they haven't issued a citation ever. So, you know, appearances can be deceiving on that.
Mr. Hewitt, in regards to the need of more access, pedestrian access, up and down the island, per our CAMA regulations and so forth, is there any money anywhere in the budget in case a property owner would come to us and say, I'll sell you five feet or seven foot easement on my property? Is there any money in there anywhere?
No, sir.
Does access, public access to the beach, is there, there is a requirement for so much? So many of those?
For federal projects, there is a distance and parking requirement. Um, for projects using state money, there is a requirement that is defined as adequate. There's nothing quantified that I know of.
And that is in the region where you're doing the beach project, correct? It's not, it's the, it's like when we talk about central region where we have our engineered beach, it's within that area?
The, the question was regarding a requirement for CAMA access.
Right.
Using state funds, wherever that project would be, that requirement is not quantitatively defined, it's subjectively defined as adequate. So I don't know what that is. I don't know what adequate is. For the core federal project, there is an, a specific amount and distance of parking and also distance of accesses to the beach.
And what I'm asking is, and is that for the range of the beach that is covered by the federal project?
Yeah.
Yeah, only, it's only that portion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Point to point.
Point to point.
Before we go on, can I just make sure that I'm clear on what I'm supposed to do with Beach Rangers? Because I heard Pat, you say something, and then I didn't see any more heads go up and down.
It's one person's opinion, it doesn't carry.
Okay, I just want to make sure nobody else timed in, because right now I'm onboarding people, and I also need to back up and come, because people have been promised jobs, so there's not currently a part-time police officer in that list.
Been here for a while, you're covered.
Canal dredging? Unless you got questions on the B part fund?
I, I do have a question of the attendees. We've been here two hours, do we need a break, or do we need to set a time? Is this an all-day meeting, or we're going to eat or pee or anything?
Well, I got leave at one o'clock, and I think unless y'all are overly enamored of, of, of staying longer, that we can cover the canal dredging pretty quickly.
Okay. Because I've got my appointments, I got to call the council, if I don't have an idea pretty soon, even if I skip lunch, I'm going to miss my schedule. Do we have a target time to get out of here, or agree on a time that we're going to continue to work? What's the pleasure of the mission?
If all, if all we've got is the canals and FEMA, these are pretty straightforward. And then it's just a wrap-up to make sure that the actions have been captured, I guess. So I would think we should get, we can get done in half an hour.
Easy.
Yeah.
Uh, current third.
I only need five more minutes. Yeah. Um, the canal dredging projects, well, let me, we've got the, we've got the FEMA, uh, capital reserve project, and there's the next two sheets, and, uh, pretty mu- or it's the next sheet, I mean, and pretty much that is the, um, the beach capital reserve actions that you took at the last board meeting to pull the FEMA projects out of the B part fund and set them in a fund by themselves. When I talked about, we don't include ESAEHS money in there, this project as it exists now houses the forty-two million dollars of Florence, Michael, and Dorian, and you will have a budget amendment in front of you at the May regular meeting that puts the rest of the fourth project, ESAEHS, in this, uh, capital reserve project. So that, that total's going to be about forty-six million dollars. And that's what we're working on getting put down for the upcoming winter, or the next winter, depending on what the big climate is. The, um, the canal dredging special revenue fund, um, those are the, the last pages there, that's, that's Holden Beach Harbor, Heritage Harbor, and Harbor Acres. We, we put, we have shovel-ready current permits for this project. The budget and the, the revenues and expenses, uh, cumulatively in that fund now, or in those funds now, is approaching three million dollars. Those, uh, we do not anticipate, unless there's a storm, going to happen, um, executing a project this year. In fact, in the capital plan and in the, the update in the master plan, which is going to take place this year, what we're planning for is a small project to do a clean-out in there next budget year, in the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, budget year. But that's going to be, uh, dependent on the final surveys, um, measurements, or the engineer's assessment of what the measurements are that we just took, but. And the assessments, um, for that, for that, um, for those subdivisions are proposed to remain the same, and I forget off the top of my head what they are.
Harbor Acres is two sixteen, and others are four hundred.
And that's all I got. You got it, right?
Comments or questions from commissioners? Any further business?
No, sir, the, the takeaways for the board is to, if y'all would do that scoring, we're going to look into the stormwater, uh, to see what kind of working numbers are there, and wasn't there one other thing, um, that we're supposed to do? Uh, we're going to stick in the half, the half million on the, uh, transfer from the general fund. Was there three?
The soil, if you're going to do the testing, the testing on the soil.
To coordinate with, uh, Soil and Water Conservation District. But that's not going to have a budget implication, unless we get told that there's going to be, you know, what the recommendation is. But I think we can work that out of what we got in there.
Okay. Do you have any further businesses or motion adjourned?
How much will you adjourn?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.